Next we have item four, it's an information item, reimagine learning plan update, Dr. Swift.
Thank you trustees, I appreciate so much that you have been faithful since early March to hear regular and often quite lengthy updates to our planning for our next steps. Tonight, the update is laser focused around what our parents need to know as they're preparing for back to learning for fall 2020. So trustees, there are more slides in this presentation than we need, but I do always want to start these by saying to folks, if you are looking for the comprehensive update, those are all right on our website. And tonight, we have narrowed in on what it is that our parents need to know to be engaged in the preparation week next week, and then to be ready for the start of school virtually on September 8th. Trustees, we intend likely before the end of this meeting to have this information going out to our parents in a comprehensive written update so that they have the information. Trustees, as we've been trying to do, there will be both Mr. Cluley's summarized, very brief communication, but also a link to click for those parents who would like to see the extended paragraphs with the explanation. So we're trying to meet all the needs for communication. And why don't we jump in, Mr. Cluley's got it for us now. We really wanted to emphasize that tonight, this is not so much about the reimagine learning plan in its formal 252-page format. This is really focused about specific next steps this fall 2020. At A2schools.org, our parents can see all of the prior presentations so they can watch all of that as they would like. So much has changed for all of us, and yet our commitment is the same, and that is every child, every day. Trustees, we've spent the last two days with 1,900 of our employees virtually, and I just want to share with you how inspiring it has been to watch our employees on a virtual setting, and how truly they are doing so much work to prepare for this virtual launch. And I just want to encourage our community that folks are working very, very hard, and this will be a strong virtual launch. So tonight, we want to update and clarify the fall information. We are going to show you some places to go and review the immunization reminder. It is so important to get immunizations here over the coming weeks for our students so that they stay on time with their immunizations. And then we'll also talk about next steps. What's on the A2 School website at A2schools.org? It'll be linked in the message tonight, you can see it all here. Our 2021 school calendar, our sample daily class schedules. We're putting a parent checklist on there. We're hearing from so many parents who just want to make sure that they know all the steps they need to take to get their student ready for September 8th. We're sharing tech distribution, schedule and locations. We have a relaxed schedule where parents will have lots of options to work around their own work schedules. We do have a Schoology video overview, it's quite brief, and a very important free and reduced lunch applications and the immunization information. So all of that is actually being finalized on the website as we speak. And let's talk a little bit about the information. Two key and critical dates, beginning August 31st, all those preparation activities will occur throughout next week, August 31st through September 3rd, Monday through Thursday. And then on Tuesday, September 8th, we look forward to having all of our students engaged with us in their virtual classroom. We have used these core values throughout the time that we were preparing for this school year. I think that a lot of folks are concerned that because we're in the middle of a crisis, we might not focus on those fundamental values. I just want to share trustees, I feel like that we've made even a deeper effort to align to our core values as we're redesigning literally every system, every protocol, every process across our system to a virtual setting. Our equity plan, we know our pillars, we look at them every week. And really following, we talked about it just a minute ago, that commitment to ensure that we're using this opportunity this fall to really provide more opportunity to break down and dismantle some of the systems that have worked against our Black and Brown students. And I'm excited about the opportunities, and I know that our team is as well. Trustees, we do have the annual school calendar up. We don't need to review that, but just pointing out that that is there for all of our community to see. We just had a few adjustments, but not mostly the calendars consistent with what we've known it to be over recent months. School day sample schedules are there for elementary, for middle school, and for high school. Just a reminder to our parents that that day will be in and out of the interactive environment, so students will not be tied or tethered to their laptops for seven hours a day. But they will, just like they do in the regular in-person classroom, they'll have a focused lesson, and then they may move out to an activity or to an outdoor recess or to a break. They'll be in and out throughout their school days. Technology distribution. Trustees, as you well know, we've refurbished and purchased new devices. We have about 17,000 devices to distribute over the next week. Our team is working very hard with principals, our ITD team, to get the distribution set up. We will be using four locations in the district. It will be a drive-through distribution, so as touchless as possible. We do ask that folks bring their prior technology to drop off as they're picking up their new technology. Reminder that that is iPads for Wi-Fi, Kinder and First, and it is Chromebooks for second through 12th grade. Those devices will be fully loaded with exactly what is needed for each level of student. So we really do support our parents making it by. We do have an email there, and if anyone has any questions, and I'm hearing from parents every day, if your schedule precludes you from getting by, we will make the connection. So please, don't fret, parents, we will make sure that you get what you need. Our technology, trustees, you know what we've done with technology over this summer. I do want to point out our next steps are coming tonight in a special briefing that you heard about last week. And that is, go ahead, Mr. Cluley, the purchase of the Kajit data system. And I've asked Dr. Kelstrom to help us to understand in response to the trustees and all of our question around, are these amounts of data going to be enough to ensure that our students can do their real-time learning? And I know that Dr. Kelstrom will help us with that answer. We're going to orient to Schoology. The part that parents might choose to do on their own is a fairly brief video, just a couple of minutes. But more importantly, everyone in the system will be hearing from their principal here soon about dates and times for a virtual meet and greet next week between August 31st and September 3rd. And during that meet and greet, our students and parents will learn exactly what they need to know to make sure that they can log in on Tuesday, September 8th. So we'll make sure that everyone has what they need. We are running that help desk next week. So if folks get the technology home and they have difficulty getting it up and running, we're going to be available on a helpline to support everyone. Our food distribution continues. Trustees, we will be sharing out new information so that our families, we want them to be able to get their food and not necessarily to have to leave the virtual classroom to do it. So we will be offering the late afternoon times and times that might fit around parent work schedules for them to pick up the food distribution. Trustees, I didn't get the opportunity to paste the article here, but I was delighted to see Senator Stabenow taking the lead yesterday. I bet you saw the article, taking the lead with Congress to try to get the waivers in place so that we can continue the emergency feeding straight through after September 7th. So that is our hope. But we are asking that any family who has questions or needs help in the email tonight will be the phone number in the email. We want to help everyone get their forms filed. It's a very simple process. And we know that we'll just continue food distribution, and we're hoping that we can continue the most liberal version of that food distribution if we get a change from Congress. Those applications are right there on the website. And remember, if you qualified last year, you're automatically rolled over for the first 30 days of school. But we just think it's a wonderful idea during this preparation week. Let us support you, and let's get everyone signed up. We know some families, due to job loss and changes at home, may have become in need, and we want to make sure we have everyone signed up. Immunizations, Ms. Bacalor has spoken to this for a couple of Wednesdays now. And I was grateful to hear the governor speak to it yesterday, particularly calling out the importance of influenza and vaccine, and also of measles and those highly contagious things that we worry about as we move into fall. So we have a nurses' corner set up, and our parents will be able to go right to this link and connect and get the information that they need to ensure that their immunizations or their waivers are up to date. More here about our RAS opportunity. There are immunization clinics, and we'll keep sharing that information as well. Want to just reassure all of our students and parents who have special learning challenges, learning needs, those that are documented in an individual education plan, and also those that may fall around English language learning or any other learning challenge or complication. We will be in touch, our case managers and our teachers will be in direct communication during the week of September 8th to ensure that we're all set up and that folks understand exactly where we are with the provision of special needs. We will be meeting in every situation possible. We will be meeting the full requirements of the individual education plan, and that will happen virtually and will happen in a variety of ways. But we will be in touch, and we will be working through those processes to make sure everyone is clear and that they feel the support as a part of that effort. Just a couple of answers there. Will our students have services synchronously? And the answer is absolutely yes. Services will be shared synchronously, real time. I know we probably need to get rid of that word synchronous. And services will also be provided in a variety of ways. But our work and our commitment is to ensure that those services are provided during the school day very much like they are when we're in in-person classes. Let's talk a little bit about the textbook supplies and materials. Trustees, we appreciate your support. Thanks to your support this summer, every student in the Ann Arbor Public Schools will have full access to millions of titles in a full digital library. Students will have access 24/7. They will never be kept away from a book because they've got real-time access. And especially important to me as a former middle school teacher, they won't not have access to their book because they forgot it at school. It'll be right there on their device with them. We will also be sharing distribution plans for textbooks and supplies and materials. And I want to share with our community, that part won't happen during the week of August 31st. We're going to allow those school schedules to settle just a little bit as they normally do during the first week of school. And then you will be hearing from us, Ms. Liz Margolis, along with our department chairs, instructional leads, teachers. Everybody's chipped in on this process. And we just have a great set of supplies and materials. I do want to share with our community that those supplies and materials will actually be distributed a number of times as we move through the fall. Because as we get to different units and different timeframes during the fall, there will be different supplies and materials. We'll always do our work to bundle them together so that folks don't have to make a lot of extra trips. But we're excited to share all of that. The art supplies, just everything will be coming. Our principals will be sharing in emails here in the next very brief time specific details about the meet and greet events next week. They are virtual. I know Ms. Osinski will put the word virtual there on that slide, so everyone remembers. They are virtual events, and particularly, they will focus in on that home base group. So that advisory group, that forum group, that Skytime group. Every student is situated in a home base group. And that's where the meet and greet will occur. And before we leave that session, we will make sure that everybody's ready to log on on Tuesday, September 8th, and they know exactly how to proceed. I want to talk a little bit about our front door email. And what that is, is we understand that in the before times, that's kind of what I call it, the before times, if you weren't sure of an answer, you could always just stop into the front office, go by the school and drop in, and just ask someone face to face. And so we've worked to figure out how to meet this need. And certainly, our OPs will be taking their voicemail messages as they have been. So that phone number is still a great way. But we've also established the front door email. And this is the equivalent of walking in the front door, and it just uses the name of the school. So on tonight's email, there will be a little link, and you'll go to this chart. And it just reminds you that if you want to just walk in the front door of Slauson, just email slauson@A2schools.org. And that person who sits on the front desk, that principal, that OP, they will make sure you get a response. And also in the email, there are contacts in each area. So I do want to remind folks, if you need to go directly to technology or immunizations or food distribution, we have contacts in all of those areas. But we know that folks may have 100 questions, and this front door email might serve us well, not only for now, but over the days of the fall to come. Trustees, we are keeping our eye on our COVID concerns. I have not asked Ms. Bacalor to step in tonight. I think trustees, you're very well familiar that the central, that one of the concerning developments this week, I don't want to use the word central because one of those is out of Central Michigan University. But at any rate, we are monitoring right now approximately 16 outbreaks at K-12 in university, college and university locations among young people. And those 16 outbreaks are in Michigan. We're monitoring those local outbreaks. An area high school closed today. Most of these outbreaks developing over the first few days of the system being open, first week or so of the opening. So we continue to monitor that. You're well familiar with the data because you've sat through many briefings. But just the next slide kind of reminds you of those areas. We look at Region 1, which is the region that the governor, that we're in, Region 1, that Detroit area, Ann Arbor region. We look at the coronavirus case numbers in Washtenaw County and in the state of Michigan. And we are also monitoring the opening of university campuses in our own area because we know that we are vulnerable during this window when so many young people are moving back into our area, many of them coming from areas with higher rates of infection than we are fortunate to have in Washtenaw County. So we continue to monitor that every day. And we always leave this slide, which really points to that CDC guidance of the lowest risks. The lowest risk environment is that students and teachers are engaged in virtual classrooms, activities and events. Trustees, I was delighted yesterday to be able to join Liz Margolis in meeting with our community center leaders. And these are our community partners whom all of you know very well, is Peace, Community Action Network, Avalon. I could go on down the list. And I was delighted to see all of those folks on our virtual meeting yesterday as we prepare and begin to organize the connections plus groups. And trustees, I'll have more information to share with you all and with our community over the coming days. We are making good progress in this area. Very good, we're going to just move through our youngest and accelerated learning, our music project, Lead the Way World Languages, very good. And there will be another piece in the email that's not right here. Trustees, I wanted to also mention that Nancy Shore has created a link on our A2 Schools partnership page, and it is a connection to community resources. So I just want to give a shout out to our families. If there are questions around housing, we're very concerned about the possibility of evictions and housing instability, questions about housing, about additional food in the community. Ms. Shore has just collected a plethora of links and places to go for more information and next steps. And we will have that in our email that we're sharing this evening. Mr. Cluley, go ahead and back up one. Our next steps are very simple, is that we're going to listen after sending out this update this evening with our immediate fall information in it. You know trustees, always with big new endeavors, the devil's in the details. So we'll be listening for the questions, we'll be responding to questions. There will be school-specific communication. So our parents who are anxious, as they always are the end of August, to find out their teacher, to know about when the meet and greet is coming, all of that, we will continue to monitor and share information as we move up to opening day on September 8th. In the meantime, we know our responsibility collectively in this community, three things, when we're outside, our home, family unit at home, to wear our mask. And more research coming out every day about the importance of a very low-tech solution. We know the importance of watching our distance. And I will ask and reminder to my team in all of our work in delivering technology and school supplies and food, just reminding all involved in those activities to maintain the distance, to wear the mask, and to wash our hands and practice personal hygiene. We know those are the things that we can all do to protect ourselves and to support each other. And so with that, trustees, that's our update as to where we are now on our approaching preparation week next week. Eight areas listed in the email for parents to check off on their checklist next week. And yet a reminder to every parent out there, we, and a principal said this to me the other day at a moment when I needed to hear it. We've got you. So if you miss a pickup date, if you don't understand how to get the link, if Schoology is a mystery, we've got you. Email us at the school name, give us a call at any one of our phone numbers. We are here. In the next 10 days, trustees, our full court press will be on hearing and responding to questions and needs and concerns. This is an historic opening. We've never had a back-to-school in more than 100 years in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. We've never had a back-to-school like this one. So we recognize that folks will have 1,000 questions, and they will also have a number of areas of concern. We're here, and we will continue to work hard every day to meet every need that we possibly can. If folks haven't seen it, we shared out our opening video yesterday. And I want to thank all of our teachers who reached out to participate in that. And the message was threefold: connections, care and community. And that will be our focus throughout this entire 2021 school year, is we will ensure warm and healthy and consistent connections, even if they have to be through this Zoom screen. We will ensure that every child is wrapped in our care and guidance and under our watchful eye. And together, our community, our parents, our staff, our teachers, and most importantly, our students. But together, we will ensure a strong community through this pandemic. But together, we will ensure a strong community through this pandemic. So with that, trustees, I just, I just want to thank you again for your attention over many Wednesdays since March. And here we are just a week away and in our final board meeting before the opening day of school. So we're ready to receive questions. I do have my team out there and we can pull them up if your questions extend beyond, beyond my awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift. Trustees, if you have questions, raise a hand. I do see a hand up. Let me get to that. All right, it disappeared. Okay, Trustee Gainer.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, this, some of the nitty-gritty detail for the next few weeks. I'm sure everybody is, you know, just ready to hear it and get going. There are some parents who have an optimistic view for a positive school year and are thinking ahead, took a look at the calendar and said, can you tell me when Huron High School graduation is? You know when we'll have graduation dates?
Oh, I really appreciate that question, Trustee Gainer. And I wonder if Mr. DeAngelis can come up and help us with those dates or if they're still in progress. But we, we can certainly get that answer if he's not, let's see if I see him.
Thank you. We have tentatively, tentatively holding the same dates that we typically have. So it would be the, Pathways would be the first Monday in June.
So, Mr. DeAngelis, you can answer this in writing and we'll get it on our page. Yeah. But go ahead, I'm sorry, I just, folks don't have to write it down, we'll get, we'll get that posted.
Yeah, it would be the first Monday in June would be Pathways. The second Monday in June then would be Skyline. And then, as they always do, Huron would be on the first Wednesday. Pioneer would be on the first Thursday. And then Community High School, I'll have to check that one and we'll get it written down. They've had to float and they've gone to the Friday night. So it's just a matter of when they can get Hill Auditorium on that Friday night. So I'll have to check that, but we'll post those as early as tomorrow.
Again, Huron and Pioneer are in the first week of June, Wednesday?
Yes.
Yes.
Pathways, Huron and Pioneer are always in the first week of June. And then Skyline is always the second Monday in June.
Thank you so much.
And I, Trustee Gainer, I just really appreciate us looking with optimism toward the end of the year. That sounds great.
Thank you very much, trustees. Any other questions? All right, actually, I do have a question. Dr. Swift, you mentioned, you mentioned materials distribution and I did get a question about books and, and some fear that students wouldn't receive textbooks until like three weeks into the, into the start of the year. Can you, can you speak to that? Is there anything that's holding that up or will it be just in time? How, how will that go?
So, thank you, President Johnson. A lot of what our students will need for their learning is built right into the system. So we've not had this ability before and it's very different. We normally will wait at high school for a few days until class schedules settle. But we will be sharing both textbooks and materials distribution just as soon as, as they're needed and as we're able to do that. We also don't want to cause people to have to run back and forth to school for every single thing. So I will share that we are trying to batch some of those things. And for the touchless pickup, every child's set of books will need to be done in a little bag for, so they can drive through, pop the trunk and we'll stick them in there. So it may not come quite as early on the first day of school or the second day of school, but it will come in time to do the work that's needed. I didn't mention it earlier, President Johnson, but your question reminds me, that week of August, of September the 8th, I just want to remind the community, the students are on a half-day schedule that week. And the purpose of that week is to really orient everyone to the virtual classroom. So those fuller, longer school days will then begin on that first Monday. Help me, is that the 15th, I believe? Seventh and, the 14th, I'm sorry, the 14th will be the beginning of the full school day.
Great, thank you very much.